I don't think he's here.
I think our town manager was talking to me.
No, you didn't.
Mayor Scoog.
Yeah, President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here too.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Next item, presentation Arizona Department of Administration. Arizona FirstNet, Ryan Smith. You're up.
Trying to figure out what time of day it is.
May have to pull the mic a little closer. For some reason, you'll talk right into it.
Okay, does that work?
Works.
All right. Good afternoon, evening, whatever time it is. My name's Karen Allen, I'm with the Arizona FirstNet program. And just to introduce my colleagues here, Michael Britt, in the blue shirt there. And he's the program manager for Arizona FirstNet. And then Greg Sunday is going to also be presenting with me, and he's a project manager for FirstNet. So we're here to explain the program to you. Again, my name's Karen Allen, I'm a project manager. Just a little bit about my background, as I spent 30 years at a police department down in the valley as communications manager there. So it kind of ties in with this program. We're going to try to get a little bit of information from you today, just to get some some interaction going, to kind of talk about what Prescott Valley needs when it comes to this program. So I'm going to go by this just a little bit, and Greg's going to get some information for you. We have a... Can you guys... Oh, you have a screen here, sorry. Kind of figuring out logistics. We have a slide here that kind of shows how technology has changed. So if you look at this slide, back in 2005, you have this large group of people, and they're watching the Pope Benedict debut. And then you flip forward, you look and you see that one flip phone in the audience, and now in 2013, everyone has devices. So times have changed, probably quite a few have some... Of you have some sort of smartphone, you might have a tablet, something that you rely on day to day for technology. And we recognize around the United States, this is happening everywhere. One of the challenges is for public safety when it comes to this type of incident. You have all these people here, they're all using their devices, they're probably streaming video, they're posting on Facebook. They're doing things that are taking over the bandwidth with the... For the carrier networks right now, so your Verizon's or AT&amp;T's out there. And so what happens, if a public safety event happens during a situation like this, they're also trying to use their phones for different types of technology, or they might be using their laptop in the car to try to get information back and forth between dispatch. And they're competing, and they're not going to get any type of priority over all the citizens. So for them to try to do some of what they need to do on a day to day basis, they're not able to do that, because the networks can get easily overwhelmed in a situation like this. So, just curious if any of you have heard of the FirstNet program?
No.
Oh, okay. Good deal. Well, hopefully by the time we're done, you'll have a little bit more comfort level with what it is. You're all aware of the 9/11 situation that happened in New York City. Part of that after action review that was done, they identified that there was a lot of problem with communications there. Police and fire couldn't talk to each other from a radio comms perspective. They lost quite a bit of infrastructure during the event, so they were having trouble talking to each other. And so it was identified that communications needed to be looked at and resolved, to figure out how they could interoperate, how they could talk to each other, both on a voice perspective and also from a data perspective. So using your tablet, using your phone, that type of thing, they needed to be able to interoperate and communicate. So as part of the commission's report, they said that they needed to look into this and figure out a way to fix that. And so one of the things that came out of that, there were a lot of public safety type personnel and industry personnel that said, "We need to come up with some type of network that's available for public safety," which is where FirstNet came from. And the vision of FirstNet, as it says there, is to provide emergency responders with the first nationwide high-speed wireless broadband network dedicated to public safety. So bottom line, what this means is if a police officer was trying to deal with an incident, such as that Pope Benedict debut, and everybody has their devices, and the carrier network's basically unavailable to them, they would have their own network that they could work off of. So they could use the FirstNet network to make phone calls. If they needed to talk back to their dispatch on their computer aided dispatch, they could do that as well through the FirstNet network, and the citizens would be able to do what they wanted to do. And the public safety officials would be able to do what they needed to do through this network that is just for public safety. So there was a law enacted back in 2012, there was funding that was set aside, it was $7 billion, which is not enough to build a network from the ground up, but it's enough to build a network based on existing infrastructure that's out there with the other carrier networks and other infrastructure that's in fiber towers, things like that, that are out there that they can use. And then there was also a governance structure set up, because they knew that somebody needed to have oversight on this project. So this governance structure is set up with public safety personnel, and it's also got industry personnel. So people from Verizon, the AT&amp;T, who have history in building a network like this, that kind of understand what needs to be done to build, to get the network built all the way out. So, there were a couple auctions that happened. The first one raised $1.6 billion to get to that $7 billion that was set aside in the legislation. And then there was recently another auction where $44 billion was raised. And so they have their $7 billion to go ahead and build this network. And some of the things they've recognized is they need to look at some of the standards that are already there. So the carriers, your Verizon's, your AT&amp;T's, they all have standards through a body called 3GPP that they have to follow to make sure that they're all providing what's expected by their users. Oops, sorry. There we go. The other thing about this network, what was built in as part of the legislation, is it has to be self-sustaining. So they're going to charge people to use this network, so your public safety people will pay to use this network, just like they're paying Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile now. All that money will go back into the network to maintain it, to operate it, to make sure that it still works day to day as it's needed. So they are never going to make a profit on this. Everything will go right back into the network to make sure that everything is working properly. And FirstNet is the entity that's been assigned by the legislation to manage this project. So just a quick timeline on the project itself. Over the next two years, what we're tasked with doing is going out and making sure public safety and others that are affected by it are aware of it, and that they're kept up to date with what's happening with it. We're also collecting data, which Greg's going to talk a little bit about, to identify how this network needs to be built in Arizona. FirstNet's tasked with bringing a state plan to... Building a plan for each state to show how the coverage needs to happen to make sure that public safety everywhere can use it. We find that when we meet with people around the state, there's a lot of holes in coverage for cell phones. You guys may find that too, when you're driving around and you're trying to make a call, or you're trying to do something on your phone. There's some places it works and some places it doesn't. So FirstNet has to find a way to make sure that this is going to work where it's needed. And then also, there's going to be, at the end, they'll put together the state plan, they'll go ahead and provide it to the governor, and the governor decides whether Arizona's going to let FirstNet build it, or if Arizona wants to build the network themselves. And so it's all going to be based on the outcome of what FirstNet comes up with. And then by 2022, they have to have this network substantially in operation, that's built into the legislation as well. So just a little bit about our office. We are grant funded, so our goal is to go out and educate all the stakeholders around Arizona, also collect data from them as we go around and talk to them, and also make sure that we're planning for the meetings that we'll have with Arizona stakeholders and FirstNet themselves as we start building the state plan. Our team is actually part of the broadband planning and public safety communications office out of the state of Arizona, and we are also under an umbrella with the state 911 office. So this is kind of an example of how FirstNet can change the way public safety's doing business today. So if you remember, in West Texas, they had a big fertilizer plant that exploded, and it was pretty... There was a lot of damage, there were a lot of people hurt, killed by this. And so, when this happened, and I apologize, for some reason the audio on this slide isn't working, what happened was that they received a call, and I'm going to... I'll stay up here and I'll read it. And the dispatcher said, "It's out west fire, the west fertilizer, one of their mills is on fire. There's heavy smoke coming out of the top of it." And so the dispatch goes ahead and tells the volunteer firefighters that are responding, "We need you to respond to the west fertilizer plant, they have a fire there again. West fire, west fertilizer plant." So the dispatcher's voicing this information to the firefighters and any other responders that are going to the scene. This is all they have. So they have this voice that's giving them that little bit of information, and they're responding to what we know now is a very large scene. And if you think about what could be done, if instead of just having that voice call that's coming over the radio, you have a device, such as a smartphone or a tablet, something you carry with you everywhere, if you were watching on the news at all... This video was available pretty quick. The news channels had it within maybe an hour, probably less, I'm sorry, within minutes of the incident actually happening. And so that information could have been pushed out to the devices of the responders, so they knew what they were getting into as they were going out, instead of just that voice call which had very basic information. In addition, there's a map here that shows kind of the proximity around where that explosion happened. So you think, you see those things like schools, you've got the fertilizer plant, you've got hospitals. Normally, when a situation like this happens, the way they would handle it is they would set up triage for all the patients at the 2,000-foot level. What they found is at 3,000 feet, there was still debris coming down, so they had to kind of alter their plan. So they would have been able to push something like this out if they had a data network that was, gave them that ability. And you can see that red ring in the middle, that was complete destruction from the explosion. So again, that would give them a visual to be able to see what's happening at the scene. And then in addition, fire departments quite frequently use these sheets, these material safety data sheets. They give them all the information on whatever type of hazardous materials are out there, tell them how to respond, what to expect from the chemicals. And so again, we are finding some agencies are using these around the state on devices. So it's not like this is something new that can't be done now. It just provides them a different avenue to receive the information over a separate network from the current networks. So this could also be pushed to the devices. And then also, part of what they're going to have to do in a situation like this is go out and see if they can find any other victims that are out there. They need to do searches of different types of premise. A lot of that's done by voice now. So there's just phone calls, there's radio communications that say, "Hey, okay, we've checked here, here, and here." But there's no shared visual to be able to see, "Okay, we've already checked number one and number two. Number three's got a gas main, we need to be aware of that, we need to be careful." And then four and five still need to be checked. So this also gives you obviously a visual of what happened, to be able to see, "Okay, this is what it looks like right now. This is what to expect as we're responding." So this kind of changes what we're doing now, for the most part, with just voice, and adds a different element into how we could be responding for public safety. So the other section that we talked about is that we're out collecting data, because part of what FirstNet recognizes is if they don't build a network that is similar to what public safety is using now, so if they're, they have a contract with Verizon, and they know Verizon's going to cover a certain area, and that it's going to cost a certain amount every month. If FirstNet comes in and they say, "Well, we're going to charge you double," that public safety's going to say, "Yeah, just walk away, we're not going to pay that, we don't have the money." So they recognize that they have to build a network that provides the coverage and the capacity for what they expect now. They also recognize that there's only a certain amount of budget that people can spend, so they also need to be aware of, what are people paying now, and we need to stay within that same frame. So what they're looking at is how to do this build out, how to make sure they're providing everything public safety needs, and they're talking about different ways of doing that. And I won't read this whole thing to you, but it kind of gives a couple different levels of how they might do that. So again, what we're tasked with is finding out, what does public safety need? We're going out and we've been meeting with quite a few different public safety agencies. We've been in every county at least once, and we're going around again, trying to have some smaller meetings to have discussions with them so that we can get input from them about what their expectations would be of this network. And then that way, as we talk with FirstNet, and we will have stakeholders with us from public safety and other entities, we can decide, this is what FirstNet's recommending. Is that what Arizona's needs best, or do we want to do something different? Are we going to recommend that they go a different way? So, that's the first part of the presentation, I'm going to hand off the second part to Greg unless anybody has any questions. You have a question?
On the slide that you had, that was showing the five houses.
Yes.
Who's providing those pictures to you?
It can be done in different ways, it can be something where maybe you've got an air unit that's up, that's taking pictures and providing that to people that are on the ground. It's going to be whatever method the public safety agency has. And there's different type of app providers that can provide things like that, to where maybe they are, they're out there taking pictures too.
And, well, if I was an incident commander with this, I would be not using a smartphone. I'd have a tablet out there, so I'd get a bigger, better picture. And any maps and gas pipelines, electrical pipelines, overhead, underground lines, I would have all that backed up into a system that my tablet has access to. How does your system differ from that?
It doesn't. What the challenge is, is there's sometimes when, if an incident like this happens, what's happening out at the scene, anybody who's in that area from a citizen perspective is probably already trying to use a network as well. So they're calling their friends and family, they're texting, they're posting pictures, they're posting videos like the one we saw. So they're hogging up the bandwidth of that carrier network. So if you're trying, if you don't have it backed up on your tablet itself, and you need to get outside through the network again, this provides you a network where you're not competing with the citizens, it's just for public safety. So your public safety agencies are able to get back to wherever they need to get to, to get the information they need. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I know, when I was in New York, we had a, through the phone company, we had FiOS. And that was a direct line system, so there wasn't the traffic when it got crowded.
Okay.
So it was, it was fairly quick. Again, it's a system that's already in use by Verizon, so how would yours improve on that?
For the most part, Verizon doesn't give public safety any type of priority. So you're competing, just as, it doesn't know that you're a public safety agency when you're trying to get to whatever network you're trying to get to. It sees a public safety phone the same as it sees my phone when I'm driving down the street.
Okay.
So, for what we're finding around Arizona is that's not happening. And throughout the country, for the most part, it's not happening. So I don't know if there was a separate setup for you in the, in New York?
Well, because of the quantity of people, they were able to set it up, but it's a... FiOS is a system that they have, it's just, right now, I think it's on the northeast or on the east coast, or really large cities like, you know, LA, Dallas, those kind of things.
So is it a data network, or is it a direct connect back to where you need to get?
It works just like a phone line, it goes right back to the server.
Okay.
So it's like having a one-on-one line, you didn't have, you know, when, when the other systems are bogging down, because as they call it, the internet highway.
Right.
You know, it's basically a direct line back to the server, so you didn't have to, you know, if there were 2 million people on at the same time, it wouldn't be any traffic. I mean, the system was really quick.
Okay.
This is too small of a community for them to bring it here, but, and I understand that part.
And this would be, this will also be interoperable across the US. So no matter where you go, it's available to you, just like now. If you use your Verizon phone as a citizen, anywhere I go, there's an expectation it's going to work. This is the same thing. The one thing they've talked a lot about is setting a priority system overall, in terms of, within a public safety agency, as an incident commander, you're probably going to have a different priority on the system than maybe your line level personnel that's out at a scene. So they have the ability to create a priority system within the network from that perspective as well, based on your role at an incident. And they're talking a lot about that. You know, if you need video right now, and it's critical to try to identify what's happening at a scene, they could prioritize that over maybe somebody who's doing something that's less critical. So there's some nuances to it, from that perspective as well, that's being discussed right now.
Just one last question. Would you be able, like, we have a command vehicle here, would you be able to create a hotspot of that command vehicle?
We actually saw, Colorado's doing a demonstration project right now, and they actually had a command vehicle set up there to where their modems and such were working off of a band class 14, which is what FirstNet works off of. They actually had dual-band modems in there, so that if they had coverage in the FirstNet network, they would go with that. If for some reason they were in an area that didn't have adequate coverage, they could go back over to Verizon and they could use it there. So they're actually showing how it's being used now in Adams County.
Thank you.
Good, Laura.
You'll have to come up and use the mic.
Otherwise it won't go over TV. We need to make it public, and also Diane needs it for the record.
Yes, and to answer your question further, they do have, along with the band class 14, 4G LTE for public safety, and Verizon, the ability to do Wi-Fi. So command modules or command vehicles could be Wi-Fi hotspots for just regular access to the network.
Thank you.
Laura, you had a question?
I, I do, I'm looking here under your title, what is FirstNet? And it says, "Build a reliable network capable of withstanding natural and man-made disasters. What science or practical applications have you utilized that you can make that statement?"
What FirstNet's doing is, they're actually going to be going out and doing an RFP, and they're putting together requirements right now, that what they expect of this network, what they expect of the infrastructure, what they expect, how this is going to work. Because they recognize, again, what public safety does, they can't afford for things just to go down at random. So they're putting an RFP out to say, "This is what we expect of this network, and for those of you that respond, that are going to help build this network, how are you going to accomplish that?" And so that's part of what the expectations are, is to build this to something, to the specs that public safety is going to trust, that it's going to work when they need it.
That doesn't really answer my question, because we, we can't anticipate what the natural disaster is unless you've had an opportunity to run your program through an incident. How can you make that statement?
Part of what they're looking at with a lot of that is big picture. So out in Florida, they know they deal with hurricanes on a regular basis. There's certain areas in the country that deal with earthquakes. So they're looking at some of, from a perspective of how radio systems, that's one example of how they can use it, because radio systems have a similar infrastructure. The cell carriers now already are looking into some things as well. So how are they going to do it exactly, I don't know. That's part of what, we're trying to gather information to say, "In Arizona, we have wildfires. These are the issues that we have with wildfires. We have flooding, this is what happens with flooding. What are you going to do about it?" And it's actually not us that will be doing it, we're gathering all this information, and we're providing it to FirstNet, the federal agency, and it's their responsibility to put this all together and determine how they're going to accomplish that. So we want to make sure that we don't miss anything, so that we are telling them, "These are our challenges, what are you going to do?"
Mayor.
Yeah, what caught my attention was, and maybe I misunderstood, did you say this is a grant-funded program?
We are grant-funded. As part of the legislation, there was $7 billion put aside to build this network. That's not a grant, that was money that was, there was spectrum that was auctioned, and that money raised the $7 billion. Out of that $7 billion, there was a certain percentage that was kept, so that each state could have a team like us to go around and talk to public safety, talk to elected officials, talk to anybody that would be impacted by this network, and gather information from them, as well as educating them on what the network's going to do. So our office is grant-funded, we are temporary. We're just here as part of the planning phase. Once that's over, we go away, and FirstNet manages the system.
Will this, will this continue to be an issue of looking at grant funding? Are we dealing with the federal government, is that what we're talking about here?
No, not at all. The government has the $7 billion to build the network, and they're tasked with building that. And so if an agency wants to join the network, so say your police department decides, "I want to use the FirstNet network." Instead of paying Verizon every month for their cell phones, for modems, whatever they're using on the Verizon network, they would pay FirstNet. All that money goes into a pot, and then that's what, that's what keeps this, this network operating, is the maintenance, the upgrades would all come out of those payments.
And who is the person that oversees that particular pot of money that we're paying into?
FirstNet. So there's a whole board of people, and I believe we gave you a list of who those people are. And there's, they are responsible for that. And so what they're going to be doing as part of this RFP is figuring out how they're going to sustain this network. That's all to be done still. As they gather everything from what we need to tell them, when they go out to RFP, they're going to be looking at, how is this network going to be sustained? Because it's, the only money they have after the $7 billion right now is what's paid into it.
Okay, and then we put, we pay for this, we buy into it. And what if people decide they don't want to do it?
It's fine, it's just like if you wanted to change from Verizon to AT&amp;T, you say, "Okay, I'm done, I'm going to start using AT&amp;T again," and you stop paying FirstNet. That's the way I understand it right now. Once they come out with the RFP, obviously that'll be fine tuned. But the discussion has been, it's really no different than changing carriers now, it'll just be another choice for your public safety users. And potentially, there's a possibility, they've talked about letting some other types of users on there, and that goes back to that priority system to identify who needs to have priority on the network. And I think Greg will talk a little bit more about that. Did that help?
Yeah, and you mentioned a board would oversee this, or cer... Do you have...
Yes, FirstNet has a board right now. It's comprised of public safety officials, it's also comprised of people who've built networks like this before. So they're from the telecommunications system, or network. They know what it takes to build a network, they know what it takes to sustain a network, they have that history.
Okay.
And so they wanted that mix, because you can't just have them build it, you've got to have that public safety influence to make sure that it's being built to, to do what it's supposed to do.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that information, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Just wondering how this would work, we have an emergency operations command center, countywide. And is this in conflict with that, or is this supporting that?
It should be in support. A lot of, emergency management wasn't really addressed in the legislation. What they addressed specifically was police, fire, and EMS. And so emergency management wasn't addressed there, but what we're doing is we're talking to the public safety entities and others about, who do you think should be on this network? Who are the people you work with on a day-to-day basis, to where you have a wildfire and you need to be able to talk to them right away? So emergency management has come up time and time again, as someone who needs to be on this network, so that's something that we've got to take forward from an Arizona perspective, as far as who we think should be on this network, in addition to police, fire, and EMS.
No, it's, is this a state agency, I'm not clear on that.
We are the state agency, but we are just information gatherers and education and outreach, that's our role. The, the people who are overseeing this are at a federal level. So this was based on federal legislation that was put into place, and that legislation identified who is on the board, and it identified how this project's going to work.
Any other questions, anyone?
Okay, I'm going to let Greg give you some more details.
Greg will do more details, Greg have at it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting us come and speak today. My name's Gregory Sunday. A little bit of background about myself, before this, prior to this, I was in the military. I was with the 10 Special Forces Group out of Fort Carson. I was a senior communications sergeant. And actually, while I was in Iraq, I got to play with some of this technology that they're going to be deploying through the FirstNet network, so, kind of fits along with what we're doing. So... Okay, so I'm going to be talking about the data collection that we've been going around and doing with the public safety agencies. And the reason why we're collecting data, and Karen kind of alluded to this prior, is that we're collecting the requirements of public safety agencies throughout Arizona. So we've actually come up and talked, and actually in this building, we had a meeting a few months ago. And then also, we've, we've gone out and reached out to the PSAP supervisors, the 911 PSAP supervisors. And what we've been doing is not only doing the education, but we've been doing data collection to make sure that their requirements are met, and we gather all these requirements, and we're actually going to give these requirements to FirstNet, and then these requirements are going to feed into that RFP that Karen mentioned before. So this is the type of information that we're trying to collect. Critical infrastructure, so we're trying to identify the critical infrastructure that are in the public safety's jurisdiction. You know, whether it be the Tom's Toyota Event Center that you have here, or it could be, as Councilman Grossman alluded to, gas lines, power lines, or other areas of interest that public safety always gets calls for service. Those are the types of things that we're, that we're looking for. We're also validating all the public safety agencies within Arizona. So we, we want, we have a list, but we have some old agencies on there. So we try to make sure that our list is as accurate as possible. So we're going out, and once we touch the public safety agencies, we ask them to fill out a form and to make sure that they are who they say they are on our list. What we're also doing is looking for if they're currently using data services. So are they, are they using Verizon, are they using AT&amp;T? And what type of devices are they using? Are they just, do they just have smartphones? Or are they using tablets? Or do they have MDCs or the mobile data computers within their vehicles, where they can do their wants and warrants and look up maps and, and those sorts of things? So what we're also doing is, we kind of alluded to this before, is that we're looking for additional users on the network. Karen said, you know, there are going to be additional users, and this is to help support the actual financial model for sustaining this network. FirstNet realizes that even with all the public safeties, if all the public safeties signed on, agencies signed on, they're still not going to have enough money to maintain this network. So they're going to have to bring on some secondary users or additional users. For example, the primary users, as Karen said, was police, fire, and EMS. But what are, who do they work with on a daily basis, or in an... Or in an emergency, during an emergency incident, who else do they work with? So your public works, your ADots. We've gotten some unusual ones that we thought were kind of unusual, but for public safety, it was, we work with them every day. So tow truck drivers. You know, they got to clear the road somehow. Snowplows. You know, your utilities, your public utilities was a big one also. So another thing that Karen alluded to was the major events that you have in your town. So when you have a major event, you have to fight with your citizens to get that bandwidth to do your daily operations on the network. So we've been trying to, when we go around throughout the state, we've been asking them, what different events do you have in your town? Some of these events are hard to find, so we have to ask and for them to provide this information, because we can't just look it up on the internet and say, oh, this is, you know, what goes on in this town. So we've gotten a lot of the interesting, you know, some very standard answers, like Fourth of July celebrations and things like that. But we're just down in Yuma, and they have a lettuce festival. We didn't even know, I actually had to ask them twice, oh, it's lettuce festival. Okay, yes. So those are the types of things that we're looking for, so that we can document these and then pass this up to FirstNet and say, hey, you need to take into consideration this area or this facility, because they're going to need coverage there. We're going to have events there. So to go along with, we talked about big events, you know, leading, or going back to the Pope Benedict debut, things like that. Big events, you're going to have saturation of the network. It's going to be hard for public safety to get on. But this is an example of where there's not a whole lot of people, but you can still overload the network or saturate the network. So I don't know if you've heard about that plane crash that happened in the Round Valley High School up in Eager, Arizona, a few years back. The town of Eager has 5,000 people. The plane crashed into the high school, and we actually were talking to one of the sheriff's deputies over there, and he was saying that he didn't have access to his radio right then, so he tried to use his cellphone to call back to the station. And he actually wasn't able to get on his cellphone and connect to the network. He also tried his landline phone, and he couldn't even get through on his landline phone. So it doesn't have to be a large town to bring down a network. It's all about how they build out capacity. So, planning for next steps, or planning for FirstNet, I handed out a sheet on the bottom here. If I could ask you, Mayor, with your permission, to address the, ask some questions of the council members in the council?
And ask.
Okay. For the first part, we have up top here, this is so we can gauge how we did our presentation and make sure that we're giving the proper information to you. So it asks, how much do you know about FirstNet? So, you know, whether it is, you don't have any knowledge of it prior to this, you're versed or well-versed. And then if you could fill out your contact information, and what this allows us to do is to make sure that we document this, because we are on a federal grant, and if we get audited, we need this information. Okay. So moving on, your organizational information, and then here's some of the questions. So what is your level of interest in FirstNet? So as, as the council, or as a member, what would be your interest towards this? Are you interested? Does it seem like it's a good idea? You know, you could have the opposite end of the spectrum, where, you know, this is pie in the sky. I want to see something tangible first, before, you know, I make a decision, that type thing. So we'd like to know what your level of interest is in this program. And then also, this is kind of a subjective question, but what value could FirstNet add to your organization? Whether it be economic, life safety, you know, it's, having this ability, public safety having this ability to have data at their fingertips can really help improve their awareness, their situational awareness, and how they can respond to an event. And then the indirect, I guess the indirect thing that goes along with that is, it makes for safer environment, not only for public safety, but for your citizens as well. And then potential barriers. Sorry, I didn't advance the slides here. So potential barriers, we've gone through, and we've asked numerous agencies throughout Arizona. The number one thing is, of course, cost. What is it going to cost? So FirstNet is not going to know the actual cost until they get the response back from their RFPs. So we're still waiting on that. But like Karen said, it's going to be subscription-based, where you just sign up and you pay your monthly subscription fee. So are there any other barriers that you could think of, whether it be statutory, or, you know, community-wise, what the views on the community, if, you know, if they're against something like this, or if they, if they're for something like this? And then last question, does Prescott Valley have a plan or budget for wireless device implementation? So is there a line item budget for wireless devices? And then lastly, we know that some of this can be, can kind of get in the weeds and get real technical. If there is somebody within your organization that we could contact, if we had questions, we could pose questions to, or somebody of that nature, if we could get their contact information, that would be, that'd be excellent.
Mary, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. I just had one more question.
Sure.
I wanted to know, if we were to lose a tower somehow, are we still going to have power? Are we still going to be able to have a connection? Or how does that work with you guys, with your towers?
It's going to depend on how they build out the network and what type of redundancy they build into the network. That is part of the, part of the RFP process, where they're going to give them a plan. FirstNet's going to give them the requirements, put it in the RFP, and then once they get the RFP back, they're going to explain how, you know, if a tower goes down, what kind of redundancy is there? You know, is it a star formation? Is it a hub spoke, the way they do it, where they have one tower, and then they have spoke towers where they all communicate to one tower? It really depends on how the vendors are going to respond to that RFP. But if redundancy is a concern, then I would put that on the sheet, so we can give that back to FirstNet and say, hey, we, this is a real concern for Arizona, that you have redundancy.
Okay.
Any other questions? Larry?
Yeah, I've got a question. When is this RFP going out?
They did a draft RFP this summer, in 2014, this past summer. And they were talking about, hopefully, the, I'm sorry, it was a draft RFI, I'm sorry. And then the draft RFP is supposedly supposed to be coming out sometime this summer. And then once that, they put that out, we can actually make comments on the draft RFP. And then they'll take those comments and bring it back, and then they can do their final RFP and then submit it to the vendors.
Has anybody considered going ahead and making part of the RFP that you have to be in the communication delivery business today? In other words, I can't help but think that a Verizon, a T-Mobile, you name them, are much better suited to go ahead and build a new system, because they actually have experience doing this. In addition to that, they would have the ability to use existing real estate that those companies have. And although this is a different service, we all understand that it's a brand-new network, different, okay? But you do have some symmetry in existing co-location capabilities. And just as a note, there's no way in hell you're going to come close in price to what we're paying now. Not even remotely. Okay? You're having a solely dedicated system that where, right now, the amount that we're paying to Verizon, for example, is being subsidized by 5 million other people in the state of Arizona, or 4 million, or 3 million, wherever that number is. And, you know, we're very small users in the total scheme of things. City of Phoenix's public safety, very small use compared to the 5 million people that live in that area. So to put up a solely dedicated system, we're talking big bucks. And when we get an order of magnitude of cost related to this, unless it's going to be subsidized by the feds selling bonds to China, there's no way we're going to go ahead and be able to afford this.
Right.
You know, let's be honest about it.
So there is talks right now in the FirstNet, the federal side, is that they're trying to see if they can get together with the carriers, and what you were talking about. And the model would be where they would use the infrastructure of commercial carriers currently, so the towers, the back hall. And then all they'd have to do is put in equipment into the shelters, and maybe put up some antennas on the towers.
For a fee, and a substantial fee to create a whole entirely new network. This is not going to be inexpensive.
Right. And they're not going to build it from the ground up. What they're talking about is using those carriers and their infrastructure. And then, once they do that, and then go back and fill in the coverage gaps where they need, where they need to build brand-new towers.
Understood.
So, but point taken. We'll bring that back to them.
Other questions, anyone? Mary?
No, I'm good.
Anything else, or Greg?
I do, but I don't.
Why don't you go ahead?
I'm just having a really hard time with this. You're basically trying to reinvent the wheel. That's the way I see it. Everything is in place already to create this system. I think it would be best to try to find a way to piggyback on what's existing, and probably have a special, you know, a different frequency, or a different bandwidth, or a level, to create a, an infrastructure for, you know, first responders and what you're looking for. I also was looking through some of the names and the people that are on the board and in charge. And they're all federal officials located in Washington, DC. And if this thing ever reaches a point where it's going to make money, I could see them siphoning the money out of it and using it for other things. So I just have a lot of red flags flashing in front of me regarding the system.
You mean you don't trust our feds?
It's a sentiment that we've heard before. And the one thing, they established FirstNet as an authority, not a federal agency. It's an authority like a TVA or something like that. Now, getting it actually torn apart and separated from Department of Commerce has been problematic. So yes, there is that. But back to your point about the, the, FirstNet also has the ability to utilize and share the frequency that's been allocated to public safety. So that is a, they call it beachfront frequency, beachfront property. It's right next to Verizon's. And with the AWS auction that they just had at $44 billion, it's a high-value property that they can probably negotiate some of that co-location cost with sharing frequency in areas where public safety probably won't need the full bandwidth. Because as you say, public safety's just a small population serving the bigger population. So it's going to be an elaborate deal, but I think they'll be able to pull it off somehow. Plus, from what I've heard, the commercial vendors would really like to say, we service public safety, and we're good enough to get the mission done. So there's that. But to your point, it is kind of a duplicate, but it is reserved for public safety in terms of the highest priority on the network. Because time and time again, we read in the national media that public safety got kicked off the network. I mean, every time we do a NASCAR event, PIR, they get kicked off the network. So that's, it's really trying to use that public safety reserve frequency to answer the problem.
I just see them sending, you know, different, they could set different bandwidths for emergency personnel, and I'm sure the technology is there to do that. You were also mentioning something about that the FirstNet is now a separate authority. This may not seem like the right comparison, but it comes from my knowledge base and my experience. Right now, the US Postal Service is paying for health benefits for people that, for the next 75 years, which is costing the postal service $4 billion a year, which is a tremendous burden to them, and it's because of that, they're running at a loss, which is causing the government now to try to break them up and, you know, create some other thing than the postal service. And if this becomes successful as an authority, again, I could see the government sticking their fingers in and pulling out pieces and eating the pie before we have a chance to use it.
Well, and then I believe it would self-implode, because Verizon would come in and provide a contract. So you're right, though. It remains to be seen if they can pull it off.
Laura, you got a comment?
I have a question. And I'm sorry, I am going to sound cranky, because I'm feeling a little cranky. I noticed that you used excellent marketing techniques and personalized it with personal photos, including one of our councilmen and our police officers. Did you get permission to do that?
We did not. I apologize.
I would tell you that I personally would urge you not to make that mistake in the future. You're using our images without our permission is really not very smart or wise. It's a good marketing technique if you get permission, but I would ask you not to do that in the future. Go get permission.
And I apologize for that, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
We will not do that in the future.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, can I just make one more comment?
Certainly.
I just want to reiterate that this system is separate from, is a supplemental system to the current radio systems that your public safety agencies have. So it's not going to replace it. What it is, is a supplement to your LMR systems, your land-mobile radio system. So we ask that you keep in mind and, you know, maintain those LMR, land-mobile radio systems, because the push-to-talk capability on the network right now, the wireless broadband network, won't be available mission-critical-wise for another eight to 10 years. So we just want to make that point, that you need to keep maintaining those radio systems.
Okay. Anything else, or Greg?
And then there was just the last question, so we can gauge how well we did.
How well you did?
We asked, how familiar are you now with FirstNet? If you could just answer that last question? And then if I could collect these from you, that would be excellent. Thank you. And thank you for letting us speak today.
Appreciate the comments. Okay, well, who wants to, number four, discussion P, purchase credit card policy? Katie, and welcome, Katie, by the way. I think, is this your first time up here?
I was here a little while ago.
Use the microphone. Do it.
I was here to introduce Heinfeld and Meach back in December.
That's right, you did.
That was pretty minimal, so. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
You'll have to talk closer to the microphone.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
All right. It wasn't a plug for Verizon, I promise. It's nice to be here tonight. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing the credit and purchasing card program policy. Originally, you may notice that on your RFCA, it was originally going to be a new policy. However, on further discussion with the legal department, it was determined that the town would be better served by merging the purchasing card policy with the existing credit card policy, because we are still keeping credit cards for certain purchases under the department directors. The P cards, or purchasing cards, are more for purchases for employees that are currently using Home Depot credit cards, for online purchases of supplies, items like that where a purchasing card would come in very handy. And basically, this policy is to set specific guidelines that'll help the town reduce the risk of fraud or misuse of town funds. risk of fraud or misuse of town funds. And another purpose of this policy and introduction of purchasing cards is to reduce FPOs, which are field purchase orders. We process many of those, and right now, what happens is, they go through the administrative assistant in the department, the department director approves those, and then they come to accounts payable, where we process those and send the vendor a check. What the purchasing card will do is it'll allow purchases to be made at the department level, they can go out and buy for the needs of their department within the purchasing policy. So, they're restricted from purchasing things over $1,000. They're restricted from things that would need to come before council before purchasing them. But it'll help streamline the purchase where the merchant will get paid immediately, and it'll help reduce paperwork on finance's side as well as for the departments. What'll happen is, the administrative assistant will allocate where that money should be charged on the online site through Bank of America, who's, who we're contracting with for the purchasing cards. And then the department director will approve where those allocations have been made, and then it goes to finance, where accounts payable actually pays out just one bill to Bank of America. So, it's basically like your credit card statement, but it's a little bit different. They do use chip-and-pin technology in the purchasing cards now, which help reduce the risk of fraud. So, that's a great protection for the town. And, basically with that, does anyone have any questions on the policy?
Mary? Question?
I, I just have a comment. I am very familiar with this. We do this at where I work.
Okay.
So, I am familiar with it. It is a good program. Works well. Thank you.
Good. Other questions, comments?
Just as a, as a comment, Mayor and Council, there will be different levels set for the ceiling on, on an individual's P card. So, for example, where Bill Copie's P card might have a $500 limit, you know, Ryan's might be set at $10. Okay, so, we have that, the ability to go ahead, so it's not a...
You gonna say that, hi Larry?
I, I don't know. But, but what it is, is it won't be a blanket, as Katie had mentioned, or thrown out, $1,000 limit. That won't be the case. There will be some that will have numbers greater than that, and some less than that.
Well, the P card, I'm kind of, I mean, how's that going to affect us? I know it'll affect the control.
Um, how so?
You, Mayor, you'll end up having a P card, and, and...
Yes.
The, the difference between the P card, to be real honest about it, the P card and the credit card, is you had best not pass your P card to somebody else if they're going out of town. That's fraud. Okay? And that's very clearly written in the policy.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, if you have a P card, you cannot go ahead and hand it to Mary, because she's going out of town for a conference, unlike the credit card. Now, the policy clearly states that if, with a departmental credit card, what we do, for example, if Mary's going to Tucson to a conference, we will end up giving Mary the town's credit card and a note accompanying it, saying that she is allowed and authorized to use that card. That's the difference between the credit card and the P card. P cards, you can't do that.
That is...
Trying to figure out why that would be an advantage.
Mayor, you're only going to get $5. That's it. $5.
Only what?
Your limit's $5.
That's not quite it. Six bucks, Mary. Anything else, any other comments on it?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question, and that was, I guess we're looking at this more from an efficiency standpoint, as opposed to a cost savings, or are we looking at both potentially?
Potentially, it could save money for the town, because we are spending less time processing on all sides, on the department's side as well as in finance. Plus, we're going to have happier vendors a lot of the time, because they're going to be getting their payments immediately versus waiting for us to issue a check.
Do we work with the same financial institution now, as opposed to the proposed, I think you mentioned, who, who was that? I'm trying...
We're using Bank of America for the purchasing cards, because we use them for our banking services right now.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
You said you get, the vendors get paid quicker? Now, how is that going to work?
Well, because with the purchasing card, when you use that at a vendor, they get that money immediately from Bank of America. Where, if, with the FPO, the field purchase order, it goes through the process and we issue a physical check. So, or they get an EFT, funds transfer to their bank, but it takes longer, because it has to go through more processing first.
Okay. Laura?
By adding the chip, is that to give us greater security?
Yes, it is.
To prevent fraud?
Yes.
Because I know they use chips in Europe for some time now.
Yes, the chip-and-pin technology is relatively new. Not all vendors have it. You may notice at Walmart, Sam's Club, they have new terminals that'll actually take your entire card in, and it reads the chip. And then you have to add a, or you have to enter a PIN number in addition to a signature. And that's what the chip-and-pin technology is supposed to do. If you lose your card or something like that, if they don't have the PIN number, then they should be limited from using it.
Okay. Other comments? Overall, the policy looked quite good, except it kind of felt like there's two steps to it. Larry?
I don't think that Katie can state strongly enough the savings that we will end up having in the processing of paper. And making our vendors happier is always a good thing, by getting them paid more quickly. And, but it, it'll save a lot of paper shuffling in the department. So, it's a good thing.
Okay. If it's a good one, I think you're going to bring it back to us, then?
Correct, Mayor. We are planning on bringing it back next week for council approval on consent.
That okay with the council? Go for it.
All right. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good. You too. Number five, discussion, phase two of highway safety improvement, street sign replacement program. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I brought Jason Garver with me tonight to help assist on this next item, but what I wanted to do was give you a little update of a very successful program that we've, are in, approaching phase two. But phase one, which was the highway safety improvement program, it was the program I talked to council here about a year ago. And what it is, it's a, with our project partners, it's a federally-funded highway safety improvement program, they call it, or HSIP is the acronym. Of course, with federal programs, you've got to have your acronyms. But what it is, is it comes through the Central Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's funding from the federal government to do safety enhancements in a particular area. The nice thing is, we get to guide some of that choice of what we choose to do it. So, through our membership through the CYMPO, we're able to say, "We thought a sign improvement project replacement would be a very good use of safety dollars," which, of course, the federal will say, "It does meet the criteria for safety enhancements." And of course, that's what the signed project does. So, want to show you that, here's our project partnerships. Obviously, the phase one went well. It was completed in this past, when did we get done? This past fall. So, it's about 90 days, and if council recalls, it did replace the stop signs, yield signs, and the, quite a few of our speed limit signs. So, with that in place, it went very well. And what I wanted to show council tonight is, anytime you do an improvement and a replacement, it's nice to show some of the success you had. We did hear some feedback from the public about why you're replacing these signs. Council may recall, yes, there was a, we talked mostly about the reflectivity that's in place now. And I want to give you a little, some demonstrations tonight, because I like to show the tangibles, and plus, I like playing show-and-tell when I can, because it makes it more fun. If Jason can grab a couple of the signs, what you're seeing, go ahead and grab the pink one here. The pinky. Any inventory has some gaps, but this is one of the signs that got replaced. This is one of the old-model fabric-colored signs, and you can see, that is not a red stop sign, that's more pink. So, that's probably, that is probably the most troublesome sign that we replaced, that had the longest service life and in place. But that's what we did, did replace. And what I did want to show you was the technology we talked about, that this was a fabric sign, that's basically just a film, that doesn't have that 3D look that reflects light. So, that's one of the old signs, put in many years ago, could be vintage, longer than Stephen's been around, so we always talk about that. That may be some of our vintage, that we were around when those were first put in. So, one of the worst ones. Jason, hold up that speed limit sign, too, that was replaced.
Is it taken by Stephen Drake or Stephen Marshall?
Stephen Marshall.
Awesome.
So, here's one of our speed limit signs. As you can see, actually, some of the film started to peel off of this one. So, it's readable. In your opinion, is that still usable, okay? But it's got new reflectivity whatsoever. So, the sign integrity, aluminum lasts forever. Keep in mind, the aluminum was recycled from all the phase one, put it in a big pile, and went to the aluminum recycle. So, we realized the benefit of saying, "Yeah, the useful life of the sign is done, but let's recycle that product and make new aluminum products with it." So, that's what's done. So, what's upon us? Phase one was done. We appreciate the working partnership with ADOT and our project partners. Keep in mind, ADOT sends its federal funds, has to administrate the project. That's very good in some respects. They had to do all the federal reporting. I don't want to go into and don't want to know how much federal reporting it was to replace signs, but there was a bunch. So, ADOT administers that for us and keeps us safe that the feds say, "Yes, we gave you the money, we did the paperwork, you got your signs." But ADOT does lead the administration of the project, and we do appreciate them letting us to make a comment, because what we did was help them with the public information. With our resident, a resident was concerned about that, we would go directly, that's why Jason's here tonight, he'll interface directly with the public, because we do have to get into some of what people feel likes to yard to replace some of the signs, and they feel like, "Well, I maintain that." So, we get with them and ease their concerns and tell them it's, it's a good program. So, that's where we got to help out, was get involved with, tell them our inventory, they listened hard, and then they had to administrate it, do the federal reporting, and manage the contractors. So, phase one is done. Phase two is upon us. Very similar in scope, in that we did all our stops and yields, so what's left? If you look on your council action, it's all the regulatory signs, the yellow signs, which is merges, curves, some more speed limit signs. That's what they're going to do in phase two. In fact, they're going to do just as many of those particular signs, in addition to some of the, what we call chevrons, that tells you there's a curve ahead, that's a vernacular we use. So, in fact, I had trouble identifying what the name is, it's those yellow signs that are out there. Curves left, curve right, do not enters, all that particular stuff, that's what we're doing this phase. Another 1,689, so about the same size of project and scope. So, that's what we're going to do in phase two. We're going to get started here in March. And what else? Other important thing, this program does include some of the street name signs, which is, is a significant safety enhancement, because in the core of the town, they're going to go ahead and replace the green nine-inch wide blades, the six-inch lettered green signs?
Six-inch.
Right, and the nine-inch blade, but on our major arterial, so that's going to include Glassford Hill Road, Spouse, Lake Shore, Navajo, Robert. Name all the big arterial collectors you're driving along, which significant traffic, we want to make sure that people can see that sign. It's new, it's reflective at night, so that, I think we've all experienced it, people are going too slow and/or stopping, all of a sudden, there's my particular destination. So, there will be 338 roadway name signs replaced, which will enhance safety along our major corridors. Just want to give you an example, Jason, do you hold up the stop sign? And, so really, just want to show, we had had some public feedback about, do these signs need replacement? And we talked about the 3M, the technology that's happened over the last 20 years. This product is, as we talked about, will shine back at you, because that is actually a 3D effect. And if you look at night, I don't know if council, you've done it, but I'll do it, and I say, "How's our new signs performing?" You pull up, it looks like that thing is plugged in, and it, as we talked about, it's a prism. It takes all that particular light it sees and focuses it right back at you, so it doesn't just send it off into space. That's why they look like they're plugged in. So, very good program, all of our signs are upgraded, and that's what we're going to move forward with. And if Jason would, I'm going to have him turn around the sign. Go ahead and stay right there, Jason. Up here, stay, on the table, if we would.
Okay.
Want to talk about, too, a little bit of how we manage our inventory. This is a plug for our town GAS department. It's also the investment that town has made in technology to manage an inventory. This particular exhibit you see up here, as you can see, there's little map exhibits. Here's a map of our incorporated limits. If you see the little blue boxes, what that does is, it does call out certain map areas of where we've got the sign inventory. We've got 4,000, 4,200 signs, of which we're going to replace 3,500 to date. How do you manage all that? We have the tabular listings of what that is, and that's like old school, lots of paper. Well, you manage that by computer through our GIS abilities. So, what you're seeing up here is particularly all the mapping areas, I think there's 21 mapping areas that get managed accordingly by computer and technology. But what we've done over the years is, we've invested in the field technology to actually go out with a, basically GPS device. It's a little more intricate than the ones you can get at Cabela's or something, but what we've done is, every particular sign location has a unique location. Actually, every sign, 3,500 locations, has been uniquely identified. That's what helps you with an inventory. If you see right here, here's a, the section here where we're at, and you can see the civic center, you see the little red stop signs? That's what computers can do for you to date, is rather than having books of paper inventory, which you can get, but this is how we manage it. As you can see, all the little stop signs, that's what makes it easy to know what your inventory is like. So, we've gone through, you have the old school, you've had some signs been recently replaced. What we're able to do is tune up all the signs, you go to inventory, up to date with data recovery and database management. So, up here, you're seeing each individual sign we have in the town. You turn on a particular layer, you can turn on the speed limit signs, and every sign we're replacing. That's how we know what we have in our inventory. What I would like to show you is, if you look down in the corner here, part of the contract that actually helps you manage your inventory, each new sign put in has a unique barcode. That barcode lives with the sign, so it not only knows the location it's at, but actually when that sign was put in. And as if you know anything about, you know, sign maintenance, your signs that face, southern-facing, burn up about twice as fast with the sun and, and the infrared and photovoltaic degradation. So, when you do another sign replacement, you can manage your inventory better, because signs that face the south, you can just, that inventory and that data is put in, there's probably 15 data entries. You could call up every south-facing sign in Prescott Valley, get a list, and you can replace those, rather than willy-nilly try to understand which ones need replacement. So, this particular project, this is what we do do, so there's some technology in putting up signs, not only the physical thing, but also technology of reading the barcode and our unique five-digit numbers. So, if this particular stop sign gets wiped out, that happens, that particular number and date that sign got put in dies with that number, and you get a new barcode, no different than when you scan something at the grocery store. That product is gone, your inventory tells you. So, when we're replacing the field, that's how we can manage our inventory better than we used to 20 years ago. We just said, "Well, we got a bunch of signs, a whole bunch of them out there." This is where we've invested technology, and it's very simple to maintain and keep that very up to date on the inventory. Just want to give you a prime example of, Jason, if you would, grab the post. I, I take the on-call phone once a week, and this week, I was actually doing New Year's. I have a real-life example of when I went out to replace a sign. I was, got a call that someone had wiped out a sign in a viewpoint intersection, whether they were texting or too much New Year's cheer. The stop sign was absolutely wiped out, most of the front end of the car was in this person's front yard, in addition to their landscaping being mucked out. But the beauty was, sign's absolutely wiped out, crunched and everything else. So, I take the on-call truck, and it was pretty simple. This is the base that's put into the ground, and I may be the most challenged maintenance worker, Jason, of the group, but I did take Garrett out with me, but real world, signs munched, and all I had to do was take out the bolt to the bottom. There's a new post on the truck, you slide the post in, or you have to, you know, assign a new stop sign, and all I really had to do was drop that in, and I was done. So, it worked. Car bows it over, and it wasn't the pounding and the pulling up the old post with a jack or anything else. When you make this investment, it does make your maintenance much easier. As I point out to council, one thing we're going to have trouble measuring, but we can in the past, you get a cold, wet rainstorm, all your signs, your 4,000 signs can lean. To put those backed up, Jason can attest, I've never had to do it, but it can be very laborious. That particular labor hour is saved with this new sign project. So, all part of the whole of when we get feedback from the public, is this a good project? Very worthy project for the investment made, and we're very happy to have the funding put in place that way. Brought Jason up with me tonight. Basically, just to introduce him, I think he's a familiar face to you, but Jason was in our particular streets department, one of our lead operators, but he was recently promoted this last year with some of our succession plan, to, he's an engineering tech now. So, Jason's got his good mechanical knowledge and like, and he's learning and managing projects. So, Jason's going to be our particular frontline guy working with ADOT. He knows the inventory well, he's the one who made up all the lists, and we're happy to have the funding, and Jason will help manage it with ADOT, so that, as I point out in the council action, we're going to have about another $400,000 worth of investment into our sign program for much better safety. With that, Jason, would you like to say anything?
No.[1780.23]
Would council like to say something to Jason?
Go ahead, Jason. Go ahead, Jason. We'll give you 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Okay.
Glad to be here. That's all I really have to say.
Oh, we appreciate what, we appreciate what you're doing there, Jason.
Thank you very much.
But use the microphone, okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, anyone?
Mayor, Council, this is just an information. ADOT's gonna manage the project. Get started in March, about 90 days. So, there won't be any action needed to take. It's just information, obviously, at work study.
Larry has a question.
Well, actually, a comment and clarification. I actually had heard the rumor that that stop sign that was broken was done by somebody plowing snow up in that area. But that was just a rumor. But one thing that the norm isn't telling you is that we had a very successful ability to get these federal dollars, bringing them to Prescott Valley because of all of the management work that the department had done. They knew where the signs were, they had a great inventory. And because of that, when additional dollars became available, they looked to Prescott Valley because we had handled, or Norm's group had handled, the first phase so well. And so, hats off to the department for leveraging our fantastic inventory and the management systems that Norm and the department have set up. And that has turned into real money and real improvements to the town. So, hats off to Norm and the crew.
It beats the old-fashioned way of having a Dalmatian dog in your ride to find him.
Mayor, if I could comment just one, one more on Larry, if I could, Vice Mayor, and I, remember Esther, that was one of our NACOG workers? That's what she did for us as her productive project was, she actually went out with Jason at the time and helped build our inventory. So, she obviously had very good computer skills, and it was actually a real-world project that made sense. And we're putting it in place due to the work that, the inventory work that was done to, you can always tune up an inventory. And just wanted to point that out. That's why we, we value any particular resource we get, and those NACOG workers did us a good job. And Esther was a good example of what her project was for eight weeks with us.
Great. Laurie, you have a question?
I, I wanted to give you a little help. You didn't know what to call some of these signs. My children always called them the squiggle sign.
So, the squiggles and...
So, you can call them the squiggles. I don't think they'd mind.
But I may have to apologize. I didn't ask for permission to put any of these logos up here, so maybe they get cranky at me, but those are our project partners we enjoy.
You're in deep trouble.
And the squiggle signs we'll be replacing, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I had a, just a comment. Again, we talked about this, as you mentioned, a year ago when we implemented first phase, I guess second phase, I don't know. But all the signs that are taken down will be recycled. They're just not thrown away, I understand. And I just wanted to mention too, I've seen these signs when I go home, and they do, they're like a beacon, like I've never seen before. So, they do stand out, and I think it's a great safety measure. And as you mentioned, I think it's more efficient in terms of replacing. So, there is some cost savings and efficiency in terms of replacing those as well. So, I think it's, it sounds like a very good program, and I wouldn't think of anything why we wouldn't take advantage of that program. So, we appreciate your, your help in finding that. So, thank you.
Thanks for that.
Any other questions, comments? Kirk?
Yes, sir.
You have to use a microphone. Anything else on that, Norm, or?
No, thank you. That's it, Mayor. Be up to Alex's item this next.
Sounds good. Okay, we move on then to number six, discussion purchase of a bucket truck for Public Works Department. Norm, your 16-year-old truck is starting to get tired. Oh, here comes Alex.
I'll still use it.
No, I know we're in trouble.
Yes, you are.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm here to talk about our bucket truck that we're trying to purchase. I'm gonna have to go old-school on you guys. Or maybe not. Oh, it is loaded. Okay. Well, I thought I was gonna have to go old-school, but that's a good thing. Anyways, we've been working on trying to, of course, I'll start differently. The safety of our, of our workers is a big, big thing for us. And that's one of the reasons we're looking to purchase a bucket truck is because that, that particular bucket truck gets a lot of use. And it gets a lot of use in all our signal lights that we have in town. It gets a lot of use in all our street lights we have around town and down at the parks, that Parks and Rec, we also do that for them. And they kind of use that on their own at times with some good qualified drivers. Anyways, we have to inspect our, our truck at least once a year. And it's getting to the point where, you know, it's getting really tired out. We have close to 180,000 miles on our bucket truck right now. It is 16 years old. And we do, you know, we, we try to purchase them the best we can, new, used, you know, good quality bucket trucks. And they do last. We do keep them in fairly good shape, and, and the safety of our, of our workers is, is the biggest thing we have. And so, that's why we're trying to, at this time, try to purchase a newer bucket truck, the one that'll be safer. It's newer. And we had three competitive bids that I thought were terrific. But we chose a 2008. It has about 98,000 miles on it, which is substantially newer than the one we have. And it's looking to be here next week sometime, like on the 25th. Don't, you know, don't make that a for-sure thing because they're traveling from Alabama with this thing. And so, hopefully, here by Thursday of next week, we'll be able to go ahead and look at it, inspect it as part of our, our bid process, and, and see if it's exactly what we need and it meets all our safety requirements. It is supposed to be inspected by an inspector in Alabama that inspects these bucket trucks for safety. So, we should have all that information in place. As you can see, we have, that's basically what it's gonna look. It's a lot similar to what we have right now, except for it's a lot newer. It's a 2008. Like I said, it had about 98,000 miles on it, and we're purchasing it for about 53,000. So, I think we got a really, really good, you know, deal on this thing. We are gonna trade in our bucket truck in, 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 in trying to, you know, go ahead and, and purchase this, so that's why the cost is so low.
How many miles you see on your, you have on the old one?
On the old one, we have 180,000.
And this new one only have 98?
98,000.
Less.
Yes, sir. And that's, you know, the, the use on it, you know, you know, it's, I'm sure it was used pretty good, but it's still not as used as what we already have. And so, we feel that for the safety of our workers, it would be a nice purchase for the town to just upgrade it somewhat and, you know, and keep, and keep our signal lights going, our street lights going, and the safety of our employees. And as you can see on the back, they, they do have, you know, it's, it's an Altek bucket truck. The reach is about 42 feet in the air. We would, substantially, they wanted more of a higher reach, but that's about the best we can do. We have a, a working lift on it to help in case we have to lift up any kind of the lights like out in Glassford Hill Road. If you can see, we have those big, you know, lit signs that say Glassford. Well, sometimes we have one person on, it's a one-person bucket truck, and so we have a, a lift that'll help with that particular item. And so, that's, that's a good safety feature for our guys when they're up there working on it. And as you can see, the inside, it's in very good shape. We feel, we have not inspected it at this time. We are gonna do that with our mechanics, hopefully on Thursday, and, and be able to make sure that it meets the requirement that we're asking for and what we're, what we bid for this product. But in that, in closing, I like to say that I think we made a good choice in, you know, selecting this bucket truck for its safety and for the year that it's on. It's a 2008, so we, we've upgraded substantially. And I think it's, is well worth it for what we need here in, in our town.
Questions, Rick?
Well, just, just a couple. I would assume that's a diesel.
It is a diesel.
So, at 98,000 miles, it's just barely broken.
That's nothing.
Also, the, the key to a truck like that wouldn't be the mileage anyway, it would be the hydraulic system.
That is correct.
And so, I'm sure that's, that's what you'll be inspecting.
And, and part of our bid process, when we, when we did do the bid package on it, we did state that we wanted to thoroughly go over that truck before we ever purchased the truck.
And that's why our 16-year-old truck has probably seen a lot more use than...
That is correct. We've, we, like I said, we get inspected once a year, and we always seem to have to put extra dollars into it and try to get it to, to meet the inspection criteria that, that's required.
Good. Other questions? Mary?
Oh, I, well, Rick asked most of the ones I was thinking, but how much is a new one? I'm just curious to, for me to...
My goodness. Well, I'll put it to this way. We have a, it's a utility crane and equipment. It's a 2008. And, and this one had 180,000 miles on it, and they were wanting 68,000 for it. So, we're looking at least 140, 130,000, if not just a little more than that for a brand-new bucket truck. Would we love to have one? Absolutely. Now, I can make a case that a new bucket truck would last us a lot for, for years to come. Where, you know, but our budget, you know, we, we try to stay within our budget, and we do the best we can to go ahead and at least upgrade it somewhat for the safety of our workers.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get an idea.
Mary, Mary didn't want one for the, for the town. She wanted Kirk to buy one.
Well, you know what, Mary? There's one right off in frontage.
Kirk, Kirk, it's not me.
It's about $3,000. It's an old GMC Chevy. And boy, I tell you what, I'd like to have it myself.
They're good for putting up the Christmas lights, right?
Oh, that too. You know, and our bucket truck is gonna get used more and more and more as our town keeps growing. And, but at this point, I think this is a, a good purchase for, for us and for the safety of our workers.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm just kind of getting a comparison and, and everything.